Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting on Wednesday, June 5th, 2013. Can I have the roll call, please?
Justin Cobb. Donald Psychowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Daniel Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chester Ogulovitz Jr. Daniel Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
We have a motion for the approval of minutes from May 1st, 2013. Second. We have a motion, a second, for the approval of the minutes of May 1st. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention. Counselor Hagan. Anyone against? Okay, motion passes. Public speak time. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than that's on the public hearings? Please come to the podium. Okay, not seeing anything. We can move on to communications for elected officials, boards, and committee. The only one I actually have here is, I think by state law, we have to let you know that the retirement board has sent their budget to the city. That is public record and is at the city clerk's office. So if you would like to see the budget submitted by the retirement board, it is available at the city clerk's office. And Counselor Hagan has, of course, one.
As a member of the CPA committee, the committee wanted to make a public announcement that they will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 20th, 2013, at 6:30 here at 50 Payson. The room to be determined. They're hoping for the third floor. And this is a yearly required meeting to discuss and receive comments on the draft of the Community Preservation Plan regarding future funding of projects for open space, recreation, affordable housing, historic preservation, all in accordance with the Community Preservation Act. Copies of the plan will be available online at easthampton.org. Anyone interested or wishing to speak about any of these issues or projects should appear at the time and place. Again, that's June 20th, 2013, 6:30 p.m. at 50 Payson.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor, Communications.
Nothing on agenda but two items to add. You may have read, and this is unofficial notice, that Carson -- I just got the official notice from the superintendent that Carson Street School is gonna -- is surplus by the school committee, and so we'll begin a surplus disposal process internally, and I'm guessing the planning department will have some input. We'll try to coordinate with the council to try to move this forward in sort of a public way so we can have some discussion about what that parcel might be used for in the future. But I just got the formal notice today, so we'll begin that over the summer. The other item, and I believe you may have this, is information from the city planner with regards to the mill properties and the Mass Works grant that we had. And essentially, it's notice to you that we're working on the necessary easements to allow us construction access, and that information will be coming to you at your next meeting, but this is just sort of a heads up so you can -- from the planner so that you can plan for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to standing committees, Rules and Government Relations.
And I'll report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Hagan, Finance.
Finance will be taking up the FY 14 budget at a public hearing starting at 6:15. I would like to make a motion and ask for a 90-day extension on the Mass General Law 59, Section 5K Senior Work Off Program, if I could have an extra 90 days on that.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, for 90-day extension for the request to accept the MDL 59, Section 5K Senior Work Off Program. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The -- I would also -- we took up in Finance the interdepartmental transfer of $4,000 for veterans' benefits, but I would like to set a public hearing for that for our next meeting of June 19th.
Okay, so a motion to set a --
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, to set a public hearing on June 19th for the $4,000 to fund expected shortfall in veterans' benefits.
And I --
Any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And on the assessor's budget, $962.64, I'd like to make a motion that that be removed from the agenda without prejudice at the request of the administration.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to remove the $962.64 from the budget. Any additional discussion? Just out of curiosity, 'cause I couldn't make the meeting, what was the reason why it was?
I believe they found funding within the -- go ahead.
No.
Oh, you can. It's all right. That's all right.
I believe they found funding within the budget to come.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That's it until new business.
You gonna make public hearings for those?
Yeah, I was gonna do it on new business unless Joe wants me to.
No, that's all right.
You want me to go into the new?
Yeah, sure. Well, I think we're moving pretty well here, so why don't you go into your business?
Under new business, I'd request that the following be sent to Finance. The following interdepartmental transfers be sent to Finance, $397.33 to fund a 1.5% wage increase for motor repair services. A $2,423.35 to fund a 1.5 wage increase for wastewater treatment plant personnel services. $10,274.71 to fund a 1.5 wage increase for water personnel services. And $1,611.73 to move funds within donation accounts. I'd like all those moved to Finance and also to set a public hearing tonight on all those items.
For the date?
Oh, go ahead. The public hearing would be on June 19th.
Second on the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. So there's probably two parts to that motion. One is the sitting of the committee, and one is setting public hearings. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You want to do the supplemental appropriations?
Sure. On the supplemental appropriations, I just would like the following sent to Finance. That'd be $48,300 to repair the automatic bar screen at the wastewater treatment plant. And also that there's a request from the Finance Director to rescind four borrowing authorizations. I believe that has to be sent to Finance also. And then the following is, the Finance Director is -- want us to revoke approval of the Sharps Disposal Program with new language. I don't believe that has to be sent to Finance, and I'd make the following motion, that the council pursuant to provisions of Mass General Law 44, subsection 53E and 1/2 authorize -- to authorize the departmental revolving fund Sharps Disposal Program for the Board of Health for the collection of fees for Sharps Disposal to be used for the expenses and costs related to the programs, not to exceed $2,000 a year in FY 14.
Second.
Second. So that -- actually, that was, as was that?
Just one motion.
Yeah, we -- we'll split that up, yeah. So we had voted on that in the past, and it was just sent back to us because there was some missing language, so that's why we're not sending this committee. We were -- motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Why don't we -- those supplementals, why don't we -- that supplemental appropriation and the request for authorization, that'll --
We'll do that as a separate -- I don't think we voted on that one as a separate motion.
Do you want to make a separate motion that the $48,300 to repair automatic bar screen at wastewater treatment plant be sent to Finance Committee?
And a second one, too.
Second.
And I'd also make a -- the request also that the Finance -- request from the Finance Director to rescind the four borrowing authorizations.
Okay, motion, a second.
Second on both of those, right?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. So I think that concludes Finance?
That concludes Finance.
Public Safety, I have no -- for public safety. Appointments.
Yes, thank you. We are going to review Laurel Pelles. We reviewed it tonight at 5:45 in our Appointment Subcommittee meeting. We had put her appointment off pending copies of her resume, which we have received. We met tonight, and we voted three to zero for her appointment to the Board of Health. So I'll make this in the form of a motion. Laurel Pelles to the Board of Health with her term of expiration of December 31st, 2015.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to accept the appointment of Laurel Pelles to the Board of Health. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. We have two more appointments that we met on tonight. Both appointments were voted three to zero in favor of, so I will make this in the form of a motion that Andrew C. Hendricks be appointed to the Development and Industrial Committee with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2016, and that Melissa Zawatski be appointed to the Contributory Retirement Board with her appointment expiration of June 5th, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to accept the appointments of Andrew Hendricks to Development Industrial Committee and Melissa Zawatski to Contributory Retirement Board Committee. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. We have an appointment given to us by the President, a City Council President appointment, of Nancy Stenberg to Community Preservation Act Committee. I ask that I make the motion that we send that down to Appointment Subcommittee, and we will bring it back forth at the June 19th meeting.
Second.
Motion, a second, to move the request for City Council appointment of Nancy Stenberg to CPA Committee and set up appointment -- a vote on that on the 19th. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next -- our next finance -- our Appointment Subcommittee meeting will be at 5:45 in Council Chambers on June 19th before our meeting.
Be 5:45?
At 5:45, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance. Anyone?
Counselor? Thank you, Mrs. Vice President. On May 22nd, the Ordinance Subcommittee met and reviewed Counselor Cobb's request around the special permitting process. We did find a few items that needed to be addressed, so we are going to be bringing those items forward in the July meeting, so look for that. And that concludes my report.
I guess we should --
Oh, that's what I was gonna say. I believe I requested an extension on this last meeting, but just to be safe, I'd like to give this another 60 days if I need to, so.
Make that -- I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And for a motion for a 60-day extension on the special permitting process, a second by Counselor Winnie. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Very much. Property, Counselor Psychowski.
Well, the Glendale-West Loville Road, Pommy Miller Road intersection land acquisitions, that'll be handled under the public hearing. The revised conservation restriction for the donate property located off East Street, we had a meeting earlier this evening, and we found out it was just a change in the language, that the Commonwealth changed the language. We already voted on this, so it's just to revoke it, that's all.
Okay. So I'll make a motion. And the form of motion will accept the donated property conservation restriction as voted on August 1st, 2012, with the additional changes that were noted on May 14th, 2013. I don't have any to read them. P. 1, P. 4, page 5, page 7, page 8.
Second.
Second on that. Any additional discussion on that changes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
End of the report.
Thank you very much. Do we -- oh, yeah, we can do that now. We do have, I believe, city business. We have to accept the warrant for our hearings election.
So moved that we accept a warrant.
Okay, we have a motion. I guess I'll just mention, just for people who are listening, to remind them, so this is will be Tuesday, 25th day of June, 2013. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. As in before, precincts 3 and 4 will be the East Hampton High School, 70 Williston Avenue. White Brook Middle School will be the polling location for precincts 1, 2, and 5. And this is to vote for the Senator and Congress to replace the seat vacated by now Secretary of State Kerry. So.
I'll make the motion again that we accept this warrant.
A motion to accept this warrant. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Counselor McCoy?
Yes. Just, I know the council agreed to send these interdepartmental transfers to Finance, but I really, since we're only gonna have one meeting before the public hearing, I should really do a formal first reading of just if, you know, just to denote which funds are coming out.
Okay, so you'd like to go back and?
Right, just to do the formal reading, a first reading, so we have it. So going back to the item of $397.33, this is a request made May 22nd to transfer from the Reserve Fund $397.33 and transfer to the Motor Repair Personnel Services in that same amount, $397.33. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund a 1.5% wage increase. Second, dated May 22nd, the amount requested is $2,423.35 to be transferred from the Sewer Water Waste Treatment Reserve Fund in that amount, $2,423.35, and transferred to the Wastewater Treatment Plant Personnel Services, $2,423.35. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund a one point -- excuse me, a one and a half percent wage increase. The third interdepartmental transfer dated May 22nd, the amount requested is $10,274.71 to be transferred from the following Sewer Personnel Services, $6,474.71, and Water Reserve Fund, $3,800, and transferred to the Water Personnel Services in the amount of $10,274.71. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to fund a one and a half percent wage increase. And finally, the request is made to approve the following appropriation. The amount requested, $1,611.73, to be transferred from the 225th anniversary donation in the amount of $1,611.73, and transferred to the Park and Rec donation, $1,611.73. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to comply with the auditor's request to move the funds within the donation accounts. And if I could also do a first formal reading on the supplemental appropriation, the amount requested is $48,300, to be appropriated from the stabilization fund in that amount, $48,300, and appropriated to the wastewater treatment plant capital equipment repair, $48,300. The amount requested will be for the following purpose, to fund the timely repair of an automatic bar screen at the treatment plant inlet. Again, all those have been sent to Finance, but I did want to do a formal first reading.
Right, just a little more clarification on the funding sources. Thank you, Counselor Hagan. I accept a motion for opening a public hearing.
So moved.
A motion, a second, open public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Public hearing is open, so I believe the first one we have is easement and land acquisitions. We have previously voted on these easements but left the public hearing open in case there were any changes that needed to be made. I don't know, Finance Director Zawatski, I know I don't see Director of Public Works here, but I know you did speak to him. You may want to add some information for us.
I got a call from you earlier today regarding the land acquisition vote that you held open, and I got a confirmation that there was no further action needed and that it could be closed.
Okay.
But I guess Joe will not be here today, Mr. Mr.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
A motion, a second, to close the public hearing related to these easements and land acquisitions. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. So the next public hearing is the budget, 2014. Counselor Hagan.
The Finance Subcommittee met over three nights and went line by line with the mayor and the Finance Director over the budget. During the process, we heard from many of the department heads, including the Superintendent of Schools, the Fire and Police Chief, Director of Public Works, also some of the other department heads. At the conclusion, and again, just to reiterate, we cannot add to the budget, we can only take away. The Finance Committee voted on all sections to approve the mayor's budget three to zero. Before we get into actually going section by section, I believe we could ask the mayor or the Finance Director if they want to make some general comments about the budget.
Sure, I'd be happy to make some general comments. This is my very last budget as your mayor, and it takes some initiatives. All of this is explained in fairly extensive detail in the mayor's executive summary, but it does take some initiatives to support some of the ongoing economic development activities that we're doing. It bolsters some of the work we're doing at the Council on Aging. And in that regard, you will see, probably at your next meeting, some requests to place positions in the pay plan that are intended to be funded by the money that's not clearly identified to a position within that budget. And so there's some follow-up that's gonna happen off of this budget to move some of this, some of the initiatives forward. It remains a tight budget. We haven't returned any positions that were reduced in the past. We still have vacancies in Police, Fire, Public Works. As you know, the School Department is facing further reductions in staff. It's an austere budget, but it's a budget that allows us to live within our means and uses a very small amount of one-time funding, principally for one capital improvement in the school district, additionally for about $20,000 for these, this supportive positions within the Council on Aging.
Moving on, I guess we'll start with Section 1, and I guess if there's anyone from the public or any of the counselors want to make comments on Section 1 of the budget, that would be the time. That's general government.
Okay, continue.
You want a motion on that?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll make the following motion, that the council approve Section 1 of the FY 2014 budget general government. I move that the city raise, excuse me, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,667,732.16 for the various departments listed under Section 1 General Government, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee. Water Enterprise, $36,250.75, and Sewer Enterprise, $43,386.40.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the approval of Section 1 General Government and a total of $1,001,667,732.16. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Moving on, Section 2 is public safety. Again, I'll open it up to the public, or I know there's a couple of department heads here, if they want to make a comment about their specific area of public safety, we would more than welcome the comments. If not, any counselors have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll make the following motion. Section 2 Public Safety, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,758,730.78 for the various departments listed under Section 2 Public Safety, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a section, a motion, and a second for Section 2, the public safety, for a total of $4,758,730.78. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Moving on to Section 3 Schools, again, I'll open it up to anyone in the public that might want to comment. Any counselors? Hearing none, Section 3 Schools, make the following motion. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,345,580 for the various departments listed under Section 3 Schools, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amount to be transferred as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee, which is free cash in the amount of $40,000.
Second, please?
A second. Okay. We have a motion, a second, for three, which is Section 3 Schools, for a total of Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Section 4 Public Works, again, I'll ask if there's any members of the public that want to come forward and speak on the issue. Seeing none, any council members? Okay, I'll make the following motion on Section 4 Public Works. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,477,110.89 for the various departments listed under Section 4 Public Works, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee. Water Enterprise, $228,990.35. Sewer Enterprise, $183,118.11. Sale of lots, $2,500. And parking fund, $4,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for approval of Section 4 Public Works for the total sum of $1,477,110.89. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Moving on to Section 5 Enterprise, ask if there's any member of the public that wants to come forward and speak. Seeing none, any members of the council questions? Seeing none, I'll make the following motion on Section 5 Enterprise. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,71,826.26 for the various departments listed under Section 4 Public Works, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee. Water Enterprise, $681,822.98. Sewer Enterprise, $1,345,304. And Enterprise retained earnings, $45,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the approval of Section 5 of the budget, Enterprises, for a total appropriation of $2,71,826.26. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
At this point, I'd like to turn the, the Section 6 through 10 over to Counselor Rist of the Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you. And are there anyone from the public or the mayor or anyone to talk about human services? Counselors? Okay. Then I'll make the motion on Section 6 Human Services. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $540,038.94 for the various departments listed under Section 6 Human Services, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee from free cash, $20,100. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for approval of Section 6 Human Services for a total appropriation sum, $540,038.94. Additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Section 7 Culture and Recreation. Any comment from the public, counselors? Then I will move Section 7 Culture and Recreation. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $530,636.43 for the various departments listed under Section 7 Culture and Recreation, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amount to be transferred as recommended by the mayor in the Finance Subcommittee. Emily Williston Library Donation Account, $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, second for Section 7 Culture and Recreation for appropriate, prove the appropriation, raise an appropriation of sum of $530,636.43. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Section 8 Debt and Interest. Any comment from the public or the council? Seeing none, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,400,821.26 for the various departments listed under Section 8 Debt and Interest, and the amount listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred and raised as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee. From Water Enterprise, $152,845. Sewer Enterprise, $328,489.46. Enterprise retained earnings, $72,680.80. Debt exclusion taxation, $1,682,637.50. And debt exclusion taxation to be reduced by reserves for amortization, $5,479. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for approval of Section 8 Debt and Interest to Okay, we have a motion, a second, for approval of Section 8, debt and interest, to raise and appropriate the total sum of $2,408,21.26. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes.
Section 9, employee benefits. Any comment from the public or the council? Seeing none, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,137,401 for the various departments listed under Section 9, employee benefits, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee. Water Enterprise, $161,876.72. And from Sewer Enterprise, $373,492.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve Section 9, employee benefits, raise and appropriate total sum of $7,137,401. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I turn the council's attention to the amended Section 10, community preservation motion, which was attached to our agenda this evening, it's a separate motion than the one that's attached to the others. Is there any comment on Section 10, community preservation? Okay, then I therefore move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $395,865 for the various departments listed under Section 10, community preservation, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the total amount to be raised and appropriated from the community preservation fund as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve Section 10, community preservation, to raise and appropriate the total sum of $395,865. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes.
That concludes Finance's report.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
A motion, a second.